Good evening, welcome to the Dearborn Board of Education for the School District of the City of Dearborn Board Meeting Study Session on Monday, May 15. It is currently 6:16, I call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Mosip?
Here.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Here.
Trustee Watts here, President Thorpe.
Here. Next item.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, Mr. David Mustinen, Director of Communications, will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Before we move on, I just want to make a couple of brief comments about tonight's agenda. The main purpose of tonight is to hear a more detailed report regarding the request for a 30-year study on the infrastructure of the district. We've got a couple other items that we're going to be doing as part of normal board minute, I'm sorry, protocol. One will be the accepting of the approval of the minutes of the last couple of meetings that we'll move on to in a minute. There's one action item that we've got on our agenda today. We usually try not to put many agenda items on when we're doing a study session, however, this one is time-sensitive. It usually falls to the College Board meeting, but we use that College Board meeting for to this meeting today. So each district that's part of Wayne County RISA has to approve their general fund budget prior to June 1. They've got to submit it to us by May 1, which doesn't leave us a lot of time for us to be able to address this one. This is one of the major sources of funding for our general Act 18 and enhancement funds. So we're going to be having that one action item for us to vote on today, but for the most part, we're just going to be listening to the Fielding presentation regarding the next steps that we would need to move forward with for the district infrastructure. So move along then with the agenda, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes at the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Policy Committee meeting, May 8, 2023, Board Report 22-136. Executive Session closed, President Evaluation, May 8, 2023, Board Report 22-137. Regular P-12 meeting, May 8, 2023, Board Report 22-138. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support.
I'll go with the motion by trustee D'Ambrogio, support by trustee Barry. Any corrections that anyone saw on the minutes for those three meetings? All right. Hearing none, can we attach unanimous roll? All right, so be it. Next item then.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 6:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Board Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to your comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three-minute time limit on your comments made to the Board. We have one blue card, but they do not wish to speak to the Board. Chelsea Jankowiak, an employee. Today's budget, today's budget proposed do not include technology costs, to my understanding. Are there other factors not including like security systems or support staff changes?
Thank you. Next item.
Action items, are there any agenda items on this agenda which Board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude those from the motion below.
Since there's only one item, can we have a motion to approve the item, then we need to fill in some blanks?
We got to fill in the blanks, yeah.
You want me to make the motion first?
The motion should be made, I believe, with filling in the blanks.
Having the blanks filled in before now, I believe there was two emails that we received from candidates, and we're being asked to select one of them as the designate and the other as the alternate. Does anyone want to comment on any of the?
Okay, wait, we're, we will be filling in the blanks for Board and the candidates. We need two Board members.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And?
Yep.
The two candidates.
So we'll start with us.
I have done that in the past many times. This year, the date that they're having, I am unavailable.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Can you remind us what the date is?
June 5, 2023.
I'm sorry, I didn't, 1st or 5th?
The 5th.
5th.
Which is the same day as our Board meeting.
Yeah.
And during the day, I have, I think it's during the day, though.
All right.
I can't make it on during the day.
What time during the day do we know?
6:00 PM on June 5th, so nobody will be able.
Nobody's available.
All right, any ideas of where we go next with this item then?
I think you still have to have it as it needs.
Yeah.
I believe you do.
All right.
And I don't know if you can do a virtual.
Trustee McDonald, since you had done it before, can we put you down? None of us can make it.
Sure, but I, yeah, I won't be able to make it.
All right. I would have no problem being the alternate, again, knowing that I'm not making it.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the candidates. Are we even going to be able to, I mean, if we're not able to be there? It does?
Yeah, you still have to fill in.
Unable to attend for the director to cast a vote on, so I guess I'm.
So are only the two candidates that you sent us the info on are the only two who are up?
Yes.
I'm trying to remember the name.
It is Mary Blackman.
Danielle, yeah, and Daniel. Funder, yeah, I couldn't, that was the name I was, so those are the names we're going to fill in.
Was it Danielle Thunder?
Funder with an F.
She's incumbent?
Yes. I think they both are. Mary Blackman is too.
Both are incumbents.
Are there two spots?
Yeah, there's two.
Well, that makes it easy.
Yeah.
Would you like me to read the recommended action then?
Yes.
Please do.
Move that the Dearborn Board of Education designate Roxanne McDonald as its representative and Jim Thorpe as an alternative in the event the designated representative is unable to attend and is further directed to cast a vote on behalf of the Board for candidate Mary Blackman and Danielle Funder.
Er. Er.
Motion by trustee Barry, support by trustee Petlicoff. Any further discussion on this item? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you much. Next item.
Discussion, master plan, final recommendation, Fielding International.
So we've been going over the last year, I believe, and it's been great working with Fielding and our team. Most of the questions that I'll defer on our team are either to Fielding or to Mr. Wall or Mr. Mustin and Ms. Farage because they've been working very closely with them. I'm just getting over being under the weather, so I'm going to let my team take over. We've got a great team, but I'll comment when needed and appreciate it, so I'm going to turn it over to you. I know there's a lot of work that went into this.
Yes.
Is the mic live yet? It is? Okay, all right.
It's great to be back. We were here a month ago, and at that time, we shared with you, I can hear my voice now, we shared with you a lot of data last time, and so tonight, we're going to show you now some scenarios of how you could take that data and actually apply it into scenarios, which are really just ideas or direction to move forward. So we have a lot of things that we're going to cover tonight, Jesse's going to go through most of that with you. The one thing that we do ask is that out of these scenarios, they, we're kind of looking at two different extremes, and so you'll notice from the first one to the last one, there's really a range of decisions there. So you may want to wait before you really dig into with questions and that until you hear all three scenarios, and then we can always go back and look at the scenarios. But we wanted to purposefully kind of cover a sort of this range here for you. Again, my name is James Seaman with Fielding International. I'm here with Jessica Stickler Lipson. Just again, a little bit about ourselves, very quickly. We're Fielding International. This is work that we do around the world, working with school districts and schools to help the master plan for the future, and this is what we specialize in. We've, I've covered this, we've worked around the world, so we bring this kind of different global perspective to the team. One thing that, just to emphasize again, the process that we went through with the district here is really to understand the vision for learning, and so a lot of our early engagements was, were around understanding what your vision is as a district, and that really led a lot of our decisions with putting together these scenarios, so that way ultimately you want to, we want to make sure whatever decision is made regarding facilities is in support of the district's vision for teaching and learning. So we spent a lot of time with that, and we won't go into too much detail. We previously had presented a lot about the engagement sessions and all of that work that we did. So really, what is a master plan and why we do it? You know, it's really to understand how many buildings are needed to support your population. So we did, last time we shared the data of the enrollment projections, the demographic study that was done. We then look at how the facilities can best support the shifting approaches to teaching and learning, so that ties to that vision piece. The third one is how do we ensure Dearborn Public Schools is prepared for future planning, growth, and change? And again, this is a 30-year master plan, so we are looking at it very holistically, and you'll see in these scenarios, it's really would take 30 years to work through the entire build-out here, so it is a very holistic long-term plan. And then last, how do we provide equitable access to opportunities for all Dearborn Public Schools students? And so you'll see in these scenarios, kind of the thinking around that, how we're thinking about equitable access. So we are now at the very last part of this, of our process here, so step number six, which is really the recommendation and a final report. And so we are presenting really a draft of that report to you tonight, and then we would like to get feedback from you, and then we would be finalizing any comments that you have into a final report that would be then distributed to you in a couple weeks from now. So really, this is the end of the process, and so yeah, this is the big show tonight. So objectives here are really just, we want to share the overall scenarios. Like I said before, there's three different scenarios and there is a range to them, and then we want to provide an approach for additional community engagement. So last time when we were here, we talked a lot about how, you know, we did engage your community, but this is a big decision, you're planning for the next 30 years, and you really will need to continue to engage your community around this work. And so we do have some ideas for you that we'd like to share about how you might do that in the, kind of the next steps here. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Jesse, who's going to get into the details of the report.
Okay, thanks, James, and hi, everyone. Thanks for your time, it's great to be back. So the agenda for the evening, so recap what we heard, not too much there, but just to ground us in the work of what's framing the scenarios that you'll see tonight. The scenarios themselves, an analysis of those scenarios, and then like James just mentioned, recommendations for the additional engagement strategy, that is a follow-up to really the end of our conversation the last time we saw you. So any questions about the agenda? No, great, okay, here we go. I'll also just reinforce that we are going to share a lot of information tonight, so if I go too quickly or too slowly, feel free to let me know, and then if you do have a question, obviously feel free to ask, but everyone has access to the information, so you'll be able to really dive deep into what we're showing on your screen and then after, and then hopefully everyone got a chance to take a look at it before this evening. So what we heard, just things to keep in mind, I believe you've seen this slide before, but really as a baseline, the master plan will address all of those baseline needs, what we call baseline needs for all of the buildings. So it's a given within the context of each scenario you see tonight, that we're, will take into account abundant light, reliable heating and cooling systems, those flexible spaces and accessibility, updated restrooms, making sure all of those work, and then of course, safety and security. So that is baked into every project that you see. And then a couple of other high-level items just to remember, we heard that the vision and the priorities have really been consistent among all the stakeholders that we were able to engage. This idea of balancing tradition and innovation was, you know, came to the forefront. Stakeholders really want a data-driven approach and transparency and frequent communication, so that's what we've been striving for. But most of Dearborn's buildings do have significant infrastructure needs, so you'll see that reflected in the scenarios tonight. We're currently experiencing a peak in enrollment, so that'll continue to dip down after this year when we're looking at the 10-year study that James mentioned. And then these idea of priorities, stakeholder priorities, accessible resources, culture, history, and legacy, increased partnerships and equity were really drivers of the scenarios So in terms of a takeaway from the vision of learning workshops that we conducted this past fall, we produce an EdSpecs, so it's an educational specification. For anyone who might not know, EdSpecs are really guidelines used by educators and design professionals to describe the ideal learning environment that would be in alignment with your vision. And so all of the projects you'll see at a building scale will reflect incorporating that alignment that we've been talking about. So that's something that we're excited about and that we've handed over to the district. It was also used to extract what the capacity calculations would be, and so again, it's baked into that data-driven approach. So without further ado, we will jump into the scenarios. And scenarios are really design drivers for how to approach organizing learners and teachers across the district. So at that kind of high level, more of the district scale rather than the building scale that we've talked about to date. So design drivers are really statements that summarize the core beliefs about the future of learning. They may come as a result of the various engagements that we've had with you and with all of the stakeholders that we've been able to talk with, and they really guide the scenarios or those design approaches that I was just mentioning. So just grounding everyone in the idea of prioritizing students, a student-centered mindset, cultivating belonging, reflect community identity, ensuring safety and security. So again, I think you've seen these before, but just want to ground us in that work that was really driving how we're approaching these scenarios. So let's dream, this is kind of a guiding question that we've used at the outset of this study. So imagining Dearborn in 30 years, 30 years is a really long time, so we're talking about significant time, significant investment, and change. So what are you most excited to see? These are a series of what we're calling scenario evaluation parameters, and they're really used to compare one scenario against another in a way to analyze and evaluate. So what are these parameters? Affordability, cost is definitely a driver, it's important. The opportunity for educational innovation, so how can we look at one scenario against the other and think of what that opportunity might be? Equity, how might we provide equitable access to opportunities for all students? Rate of change or time, so how long will it take to impact the greatest number of learners? That's something to take into consideration. And then sustainability, so based on Dearborn's priorities, what's the opportunity to integrate sustainable strategies with the master plan? So the scenarios, how did we approach designing and looking at scenarios for Dearborn? James mentioned the spectrum, and so what you see on the left is where we're just calling A, and on the right, we're calling it Z. And this scenario is again, how to approach and organize teachers and students across the district. So if you'll remember, we used the database, or we shared the database last time we were here, and that had the various metrics that we shared, and that's really all of that data, again, on the building scale, and so this again is on the district scale. So the scenarios are driven by ultimately what we heard and the design drivers, so they're all consistent in that respect. So if you think about A, A is more of the status quo in terms of the number of buildings and schools in the district. So strategically renovate or replace all buildings over the next 30 years is that idea on the left side of the spectrum. And on the right is Z, so it's a more radical shift in this number and how we might organize teachers and students across the campus. So say consolidate elementary, middle schools into K8s and create a central high school or high school campus. So in terms of the process, we engage district leadership to work through opportunities and challenges presented by the far ends of the spectrum, and then keeping, of course, keeping what we heard from the community at the forefront of the discussion. And so from there, we're going to jump into the three scenarios that we'll share tonight. And again, there is definitely going to be a lot of information, so feel free to pause me and ask questions at any time.
Actually, what I would ask is, if we've got questions on any numbers or things like that, something you really need clarification on at that moment, please ask. If it's more opinion-based or comment, if you can write it down, and then we can cover everything at the end of that. Thanks.
Sure. Okay, so we have guiding questions that really frame each of the scenarios, but you'll see graphically on the screen where they fall on the spectrum. So how might we preserve and protect all of the existing schools in Dearborn while preparing for the future? The first scenario we'll discuss, we're calling school by school, and that strategically renovates and replaces each facility in the district. So it really is that far-left side of the spectrum with a little nuance that we'll get into in a little bit. So then we have the hybrid scenario, how might we maintain tight-knit neighborhood schools while expanding opportunities for high school students? And so then we're looking at strategically renovating and replacing schools and K8s, but then consolidating all three high schools into one campus with a three-high-school model. So what might that look like and what opportunities might that afford? And then on the right, you'll see community campuses, so how might we increase access to enhanced resources and opportunities for all students in the greater community? So there, we're looking at elementary and middle schools consolidating all of them into K8s in terms of organization, and consolidating all three high schools into the one campus with the three-high-school model. So we'll start with the school-by-school scenario. So how might we preserve and protect all of these existing schools in Dearborn while preparing for the future? The school-by-school scenario replaces or renovates again each facility using the dashboard to determine that scope and prioritization for the building. So if you remember, the dashboard really looks at the scope, so what types of projects, what types of intervention we would need at a building level, and then also which schools have the most need in terms of priority. So we would maintain current elementary, middle, and K8 in high schools, with the exception of Smith Middle School, we would suggest converting that into a K8, and we'll talk about that in a moment. And then again, remember that each school that's renovated or replaced is done so to align with that vision of learning and addressing the facility needs. Also pre-K, so pre-K, we had a great discussion about that last time we were here, how to handle pre-K moving forward. We coordinated with district leadership, and we decided on a projected enrollment number for pre-K that we could integrate into this model. So you'll see a different way of handling integrating pre-K in each scenario that we can evaluate and look at. So in this model, it's fully integrated into the elementary and K8 schools themselves. And then we also have how renovation to include a purpose-built special education space. So you can see at the bottom, this results in 30 educational sites and what that breakdown looks like in terms of the three high school campuses, keeping three individual high schools, 17 elementary pre-Ks in the neighborhoods, three K8s, four middle schools, and three So the next series of slides, and you'll see this repeated, this pattern for each scenario is a series of maps. And so what this is designed to do is really look at the main highlights or takeaways from each scenario and be able to see how the recommendation is mapped out in space. So just to orient everyone, you'll see on the right a legend, so dark blue denotes a school that is intended to be replaced or built new, and all of this information is taken from the dashboard per that recommendation. So there are 11 replace and or build new projects in this scenario. Renovate is light blue, renovate and an addition is orange, so that's when you would need to build additional capacity into the existing school to be able to accommodate projections, and then a new green site would show up in green. So here, just to highlight that we would integrate pre-K at each elementary school. For K8, the main highlight here, our takeaway, would be converting Smith into a K8, and that creates a K8 opportunity on the west side. Right now, they're located in the northeast, the existing K8 schools. And then it also frees up Nolan as a potential swing space, and we'll talk more about that in a bit.
I have a question. I just, I think this is my understanding, but I want to make sure that others understand it as well.
Please.
When you talk about replace or rebuild, I mean, I'm sorry, replace or build new, that doesn't necessarily mean demolishing the existing building, correct?
It does mean demolish the existing building.
It does.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because what the dashboard told us, that financially, it would be more prudent to do that than to try to renovate.
I mean, so if there's a building that exists that has this historical value, we wouldn't necessarily try to repurpose that maybe to the city or something like that? That's?
Absolutely, and we'll touch on that, but you're spot-on. All of these are, you know, suggestions, and then in terms of the cost model, we actually have an additional percentage on top of what a new construction or renovation would be to account for historic preservation, as just an estimate for now.
Okay.
Yeah, but it would have cost implications.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll touch on that later, you said.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Okay, so middle school, we're maintaining the status quo and updating the facilities here for the school-by-school scenario. And then high school, same in terms of the status quo and three individual campuses. Also, just to look at the capacity needs for high school, there would be a small addition for Dearborn High and Edso4 that would be needed, but it doesn't equate to a need for a fourth full comprehensive high school. And then in terms of the specialty facilities or the special facilities, they're located in the northwest, so just keep in mind that when we're looking at them spread out across the map. And this is what the district looks combined altogether in space. So two properties become vacant when this master plan is complete, Nolan and Cotter. And that was a takeaway from this study. Okay, swing approach. So what we mean by swing is where students would go when their home school is being renovated or built new. And so each scenario looks at swing somewhat similarly, but a little bit different, and there are different implications for each scenario. When weighed together and analyzed, can make a difference. So as a baseline, we're trying to use existing facilities to temporarily house students. So in this scenario, Nolan becomes free when Smith becomes a K8 in terms of the facility. So again, there's a lot of detail, and we don't have to go school by school, but that's just an example of what we're talking about.
So as an example in that case, the first step would be to expand all Smith so that it can fit the students from Nolan, and then Nolan becomes a place where another school occupies while the renovations are going on to that building?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so to that point, there becomes buildings to prioritize in each scenario that allowed those buildings to be swing space for the district.
And then Cotter would be the swing space on the east end. And then Cotter would be the swing space on the east end.
So we evaluated that and we actually decided against that because Cotter's small and you'd need to add so much capacity that it didn't seem to make sense financially and from a planning perspective.
Thank you.
Yep, but there are challenges for swing for this, for this approach. Uh, the other two swing sites that we would suggest to use would be Woodworth Middle School and Henry Ford Elementary School. And they have sites that are big enough that you could build a new school on that site and students in that school could swing, they couldn't, uh, have, they could go to that new building, move into that new building. The old building could be left and used onsite as swing for the duration of the master plan. Now that has challenges to it, but it's possible. Um, so that would be an approach to be able to, to do this work. And that would give you three swing sites that would be available at one time. Um, so I think those challenges are pretty much what I just outlined. Uh, and in terms of high school, there are obviously more students in a high school. So we would look at that as phase construction over multiple years. So renovating a complete high school, if we keep the existing high schools, would just take a bit longer. So speaking of longer, we developed a series of working assumptions to figure out and determine a timeline for the overall master plan. So just a couple of notes, um, all of these designing construction timelines are estimates only. And so actual schedules would need to be coordinated and confirmed in a future phase of work. But for the most part, we feel pretty good about them. Uh, and then also you'd want to tie the construction schedule specifically with school years. So whether it's two, maybe two and a half for high school, but really two or three, um, you'd want to keep that consistent so that teachers and students, teachers would have the opportunity and this, this district would have the opportunity to swing and actually allow the move to take place. So for elementary school, we're estimating one year for design, uh, and two years for construction, so the full cycle being three years. And for high school, it's a little bit more, so high school, one and a half years for design and two and a half years for construction, so a cycle of four years. So this is aggressive, uh, we feel it can be done, but again, would have to be evaluated in a grant, more granular level of detail at a later time. So looking at three swing spaces that we just talked about, with thirty educational sites, when we map that out over time, we estimate that this could be done in twenty-seven years. And this assumes six active projects constantly running, so design and construction would overlap. So it is, um, it's a lot of work, it's a, a demand on the district. So what are the advantages of a school-by-school scenario from a community and education perspective? Uh, greater access to car-free families, walkable, bikeable, really that element or that neighborhood feel. Positive public perception, we heard a lot of people that wanted neighborhood schools. Um, smaller schools can result in more parent involvement, focus on lower grades. Younger students can reduce intimidation from older students. Uh, fresh start for students moving from elementary school to middle school. Teachers may experience decision, greater decision-making roles and feel a greater sense of agency. And then maintaining separate high schools with the current school identities and community, current community partnership model in terms of the status quo. Uh, so we did build in this kind of let's talk question at the end of each scenario if we want to do that. Otherwise, I can continue and go through the other two scenarios before we pause.
Any comments about the first scenario? Trustee Pellicoff?
Well, I don't want to get too long on my comments. Um, one, uh, when you talk about swinging students.
Yeah.
From one building to another for a two-year period, basically is what we're saying, and then moving them back. How disruptive do you foresee that to be? Is that within their same general neighborhood boundaries that we already have established? Or are we talking about swinging students from school B? That's two boundary lines over into that building and then moving them back again in another? Because I have sat on the sport since two thousand and eight. We've had several boundary changes over the years that were minimal compared to what you are proposing here in a twenty-seven-year timeline and parents and students alike are, um, challenged by those kinds of, um, disruptions. So what is it that we're really talking about here?
Yeah, that's a great question, so thank you for that. So I think a couple of layers to your question. Um, in terms of boundary changes, and we'll look at this when we compare the three scenarios, this might require some slight boundary changes for the final master plan, but minimal. It would really be, we're imagining that it would be to address, um, had the, the change from Nolan to Smith in terms of a K eight and that sort of thing. But in terms of boundary changes, this is the most minimally disruptive approach that we're looking at. Now, in terms of swing, it's not a boundary that would be disrupted, but it would be, it could be a transportation, uh, challenge. So not always, but what we've tried to do in this scenario, and then you'll see in future scenarios, is strategically locate potential swing spaces at different areas of the district, so they would be closer. But we wouldn't have necess, we wouldn't necessarily be able to put a swing space in, within each boundary.
But I want people to understand that though.
Yeah.
That if we were rebuilding a building, those students would be completely out of their neighborhood school.
Yes.
For a period of two years while that was occurring.
Correct, thanks for that clarification. So it would be the same group of students.
Right.
But they would be going here instead of going here.
For two years.
For two years, yeah.
At minimum.
Yes.
Uh, okay, um. Then the other thing, uh, from what I saw on the original map with the elementary schools and, uh, trustee McDonald mentioned she was wanting to clarify what the new meant, um, with the dark blue. It looks like almost every elementary school is slated on the block for being demolished and rebuilt. Now, some of these schools, I was on the board when we did the original bond in two thousand and one, uh, that are fairly new, and we've invested a lot of money in all of them over time. A lot of, um, taxpayers are going to say, well, what the heck? You know, we, you've just put all this money into these schools and now you're, you know, we put, we put lunchroom addition at Woodworth. We did, we, we went out to the original, um, for Fordson High School, we went out and got the original, um, brick that was being used on the building when it was first built. I mean, there's a lot of investment.
Yes.
If nothing else, and I'm not even going to go into the, you know, historical value or, or the, uh, you know, allegiance to your building. Was that incorporated into the decision to just summarily say, it looked like almost every elementary school was in that, um, category?
Yes, it, it was, uh, it was incorporated. So in terms of the historic piece or really any school, there's always a renovation that could happen in lieu of a replacement. Uh, but what we did was we took the information that we received from the dashboard and we put in all the data, and that included the facility condition index. So you might remember that we talked a little bit about that last time. And what that is, is really a mathematical equation to understand how much work would be needed to put into the facility from a purely facility standpoint, divided by the maintenance costs, the deferred maintenance costs. And so when one outweighed the other, and it would be more economical to replace the facility, that's what you're seeing in dark blue.
So I want everybody then to also understand that the decision was made by a mathematical formula.
Correct.
And not by any, any, um, other parameters other than artificial intelligence, basically fitting in these numbers and, and coming out with a conclusion at the end.
Correct. Now, I will say, if a building, if we want to keep a building and renovate it, we can do that. It just might have cost implications.
But this isn't going to be looked at today, that kind of cost implications of renovating as opposed to building new, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yeah, and I, I think just one thing to add here, um, so this is one end of the spectrum that we're showing. So we're going to show you some more.
We can move into some things.
But the whole idea behind this is you're getting your, um, we're, we're trying to show you the extremes and your point is definitely well-taken. However, the historic piece was part of, that was one of the parameters that was part of helping us kind of select, you know, which, which one is, you know, which ones to keep, which ones to completely renovate. So it is embedded in there, um, so you, we'll see a whole spectrum, but the thing is, is you don't have to decide on, let's say you go to something that is this more school-by-school scenario, and you're, you guys are leaning more towards this side, side of it. We could then go, you, you are going to need to engage your community further, and it may come out that there may be some schools that you just are real gems to the community that you would want to keep. And then you would have to then shift that over into the, you know, into.
I'm, I'm more asking the question so that the community at large who's listening to this is going to just jump to one conclusion because they will only have one perspective.
Yes.
Out there, and, and it, it can tend to get kind of, um, chaotic when people weigh in.
Yep, so you, yeah, so you understand what we're doing, and so that's why this is a spectrum. So yeah, thank you for pointing all of that out because it is, yeah, this isn't, this is a very complicated.
It's not an easy draw, A to Z.
Yes, right, it's a very complicated decision. There's going to be a lot more that will happen. And I, what we would imagine really out of this work is that, you know, we were showing the A to Z and then we were kind of showing the box in between. So really, it's probably going to be somewhere, where do you fit in between? Is it leaning towards one side, leaning to, to the other ultimately? There is going to be a lot of engagement that you have to do to, to really fine tune this master plan. So this is, what we're trying to provide you with here is a holistic approach, looking at every aspect of it, giving you a, a tool to make good decisions, uh, moving forward, um, with your community. So, um, so anyway, thank you for all that clarification, you're absolutely right.
And we're talking about several months of going out, right? Didn't you say that, David? So this is going to take a lot longer, it's not going to be, it's not going to be like even the other boundaries that probably, that was even a shorter timeframe that we did. I mean, you're talking months, David, wasn't it?
Up to twelve months.
Yeah, so it's going to be making sure that we get good input and what is the board, you know, willing, willing to do? Or what do they support? Trustee Watts?
So looking at the school-by-school scenario for the elementary, so we're looking at the suggestion of saying, you know, based on the data, the eleven, uh, building new elementary schools. Where do we find, I guess, have you guys surveyed, like, where's the land?
So it would be onsite, it would be on the same site. That's why we would swing students out of that building to another location. We would demolish that building where it currently exists and then rebuild on that same site.
Okay, so the parents who are, who are listening saying, I brought this house because of this school, because of proximity, I'm across the street, you'll still have that with some construction trucks, but you will not lose that elementary school location.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one question I'd have more for Dr. Maleko is the idea of swing sites. Can you let us know sometimes we've done this before in the district? I can think to when we did an expansion at, um, Ri- River Oaks, uh, students started going over to Lindbergh. Uh, I think William Ford would have been an active school when it was rebuilt, but I don't remember if.
Yeah, it would have been the two thousand and two bond, and, um, there was movement. David, you probably have better, uh, recollection since I was in the building.
What's our experience been when we've tried to do the temporary, this is your new school and then bring them back?
I think, um, I think probably the best example of swing schools in Dearborn goes back to, um, uh, back to prior to the two thousand and three bond when we had a lot, when we really had a large enrollment growth. Um, we bought a, a closed parochial school on the very northwestern edge of our district. Um, and we moved students to that building. And we renovated that building, brought it up to our standards, renovated that building and used that building as an elementary school for several years, about four years. And then once Gear Park was built, those students returned and we actually ended up going to Gear Park. Um, but those students came from a variety of areas, mostly from that Gear Park area and were bussed all the way over to that Joy Road and Telegraph. That's where the school is, but it was a very far extreme, uh, of our district. And so that was a, that's probably the best example that I can think of offhand of swing space, uh, used here.
And, and I can comment on something a little different because I was principal at the time, and assistant principal and then principal. We built the new building there, um, but the students stayed in the old, it wasn't really a swing per se, so we've also done it that way because we had extra space that was coming across the street with a brand-new building on that field that I remember, uh, going out when I was a teacher. Um, and so the students basically stayed in the, in that building, um, until the other building was built, and then some of the middle school students were shifted from stout after that.
Well, I bring up the case of, of River Oaks and Lindbergh because it's relatively fresh and some of the other trustees were on the board at the time, where we were having parents coming back and saying that they wanted boundary line exemptions to keep their kids at Lindbergh, even though supposedly they'd always been told, you're going to River Oaks once it's completed. But what I can't remember is what was the timeframe on the construction over at River Oaks? Would have been much different than what we're talking about here where it's like a two-year construction.
Students were moved from River Oaks because of enrollment issues, because of the, uh, capacity issues. So that was part of the redistricting and re-boundaries. And, and they were moved from River Oaks then over to Hague and Lindbergh with the promise from the board that when River Oaks was renovated, they would move back. It was almost a ten-year timeframe before that happened. Um, and then, or maybe a little bit less than that. And then when it happened, when River Oaks was renovated and additional space was added on, you are correct that, you know, such a long timeframe had gone by. Many of the parents were so used to going to Lindbergh and, and Hague, they were like, no, this, this is our home school now. Um, but the promise was that these students would return to River Oaks.
Now, the difference in this situation is everybody goes to the building. The teachers, the students.
Correct.
This isn't that you've gotten used to these teachers and you don't want to leave them, they're coming back to the same building that we're sitting.
Which is similar to the Gear Park situation. Once Gear Park was built, many of those teachers who were at that other school, uh, moved over to Gear Park once it was built.
And the same with Salina.
Yeah.
They all, all the elementaries pretty much moved.
Addition.
Yeah, Salina was a little different because the Salina students, the middle schoolers were at stout. So the teachers just, for the elementary, just shifted over.
McCully-Unis also was a major.
Well, McCully-Unis also, some went to River Oaks, I mean, not River Oaks, to the, um, I forget, and I was on the committee that chose the church that we bought in, um, Dearborn Heights and renovated. Um, they, they also went from my neighborhood over to that building for a period of years until McCully-Unis was completed as well.
Yeah, the name is escaping.
Yeah, for some reason.
Yeah, International Studies, yeah, International Studies Academy is what we called it, yes.
Any additional questions on the school-by-school scenario before we go on to the next?
I have a question about some, the schools that are to be replaced or marked to be replaced here. Um, do we have an order or priority kind of order of which one is most likely to go first? And which one is most likely on the border of renovate instead of replacing?
Yep, that's a great question. So it, it's all broken down on the dashboard. A little bit later in the presentation, we actually have, uh, a few, three slides, a series of slides that map out where the high prioritization, uh, medium prioritization and lower prioritization would be. And so we used the, the dashboard twofold, one to assess the scope of the project that would need to be completed, and then the second was prioritization, so based on needs, uh, where that, where that came. And so that would be the first prong to determining the prioritization. And then the second is this idea of swing space because we need to make sure that there's a school, a building for those students to attend. So it's twofold that, um, that's driving that decision.
Trustee Watts?
So I know going into the next two scenarios, something to keep in mind, regardless of whether or not we're at, you know, A, B or, or Z, the schools themselves, the interior components of the school, will they all still be the same regardless of which scenario we're looking at? Are we still thinking that we're going to have a flexible workspace, we're going to have lighting? So the, the interior may look the same regarding, regardless of the scenarios.
Yeah, that's a great point of clarification. So the idea is that each interior would be brought up to the level of, uh, that it would be in, be brought into alignment with the vision for learning. So that educational specification that we were talking about, that reimagines to a certain extent what that might be and everything you were just talking about. And then also those baseline needs, lighting, adequate lighting, restrooms, et cetera. Uh, each, each school that you see, yes, would include that.
Trustee McDonald?
Um, this actually goes on all three scenarios, but, um, since we're here, I'm just going to bring it up. You had talked about, um, turning Smith into a K eight. Now, all the other. Now, all the other scenarios talk about only having K eights. My question is probably more for Dr. Malaco. My children only went to a very small elementary school, and I felt that they really had a good experience there because it was like a family and, you know, every teacher knew who they were because, and every teacher knew who everyone was. So I'm just wondering, in your experience with the K eight buildings as opposed to our smaller elementary schools, and I know there's pros and cons for both, overall, what do you think is a better model?
I mean, they both can work, you know, obviously.
A better model to meet the needs of our students.
Yeah, I mean, you get more efficiency by combining for staffing and all sorts of things. So from a cost saving, it's not just the building, but you get efficiency that way when you have, you know, a larger building. But I, I, I agree with your, you know, smaller, I get it. And parents love their, their schools. I'm not going to mention which schools, but when Brian Wiston was superintendent, I mean, there was some discussion about, you know, movements and do we combine, does one of the smaller buildings close? But we never went there.
Well, can, can I add to that? There was a reason for that. The board committed, when I was on the board then, that we would support our local neighborhood schools because it had a sense of community neighborliness and, and being invested in your parents and your, and your businesses who were right next door to the elementary school, the middle school, had, had a, had a real return on it that you can't put a dollar figure on sometimes. And that was very important for us as a board then. And we made a, a statement and a commitment at a board meeting that we would continue to support the concept of neighborhood schools.
The other advantage to K eight is transition, because you're in the same building. And so it's a lot easier to transition to sixth grade when you've been going there and you know the staff. Even though they might not be the same teachers, there is an advantage to that, just as another factor.
For the students that would have remained in the building.
Yeah, yes.
If I can just add to that too, if it gets to the point where a K eight is something you are wanting to explore, we can show you, within just the design of a school, you can break down the scale of it to have it be designed around smaller learning communities within, even though it's kind of one contiguous building, it can be designed in a way that you can still capture that, that smaller feel, culture. And so when it gets to a point where we're, someday, getting into the actual designs, we can show you examples of how that, that could actually work well.
Any, trustee Watts?
And I think, I mean, I've visited some K eight schools and, and they do have their advantages. But I think one of the things that was on the slide is that if you have a child that's in elementary school that may be being bullied or whatnot, having a fresh start with a middle school, they wouldn't be able to have that opportunity here. So I think part of that is, yes, everybody knows you, that's a positive and a negative. So I think something else to think about with that.
And the other thing is, we know, like, are some of our elementary schools, our parents, PTAs, they love, you know? So that's another factor.
Well, it's the hub of the neighborhood. And, and that was the concept when Dearborn put the elementary schools into each unique neighborhood.
Absolutely. And so this is the exact conversation that we had hoped to have. And the purpose of really designing, these aren't necessarily, they're not options, right? They're not design options, they're different ways to approach so that we can have the conversation. And then we can go to the community with the scenarios you want to go to the community and then get their additional feedback for how they feel. So thank you.
Trustee Moser?
From your own experience, obviously, with other districts, are you seeing more of a shift of combining elementaries and middle schools into K eights?
I think we're seeing both.
Yeah, it, it does vary. I, I guess, yeah, it, it really does vary. You know, some districts combine because of challenges of, they don't have land available or, you know, they're trying to, they need to kind of condense. But other districts do, you know, want to have more of that neighborhood school. So it's really your, your district's preference, really. So, so we've seen it kind of go, it, it can work any.
And we'll continue to highlight some of the kind of pros of each approach as we move, move forward and dig into the other scenarios too.
Trustee Ambrosio?
We're off track.
So a cost factor, combining versus two different schools, where do we sit?
So can we put a pin in that? Because we did a cost model for each scenario and we kind of show that later, so it might make more sense to do that. It's not necessarily one versus the other. We approached the cost with a consistent methodology in terms of new construction, renovation. We have a cost for demolition, we have an additional percentage increase for historic property. So we applied that holistically and we use that against a dollar per square foot. So it really looks at the area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Pellicoff?
One other thought with neighborhood local schools versus a, you know, campus-style setting. We're trying to, we've been working so hard here in Dearborn, we had a team called Healthy Dearborn to encourage our students to be out walking, biking, whatever to. When you have a, a consolidated location, it discourages that kind of interaction with running over to your neighborhood schoolyard. And it also could be detrimental in access to those parents who don't have vehicles to drive their child over to a, a hub location kind of event. And so it could be exclusionary to some extent as well for those. So I just, you know, we, we have to take all of that into consideration as to what would fit the needs of the families.
And I'll think, I think we'll see more of that as we go into those other scenarios. Any additional comments before we move on? Thanks.